You and I, we will call our planning commission meeting to order for October 11th, 2018 at 5:30 PM. Ms. Blaine, could we have a roll call, please?
Erin Arden.
Here.
Joe Chaplin.
Here.
Don McBride absent. Rene Spinato.
Here.
Chris Bryant.
Here. We have a quorum. Public comments, probably none, other than knowing who's here, other than our subjects this evening. So we will skip that part of it. We do need to discuss the approval of minutes, correct? Ms. Blaine?
Yes.
Approval of minutes from our regular meetings of August 9th and September 13th. We did not have the quorum originally on the August 9th one. Do we have, who was the three of us at that meeting? Do we have those three here?
Yes, it was you, Joe, and Chris at the last meeting.
Okay.
Moved to accept.
On the August 9th by Commissioner Chaplin. No discussion, minutes approved as written at that time, and now all the minutes for the September 13th meeting.
I moved to accept.
Moved to accept again, discussion, those minutes are also approved then. We have two items, four and five, that I believe I will let our staff discuss that. I think they have been, what would you like to tell us about items four and five? A possible ice, partial road closure on pulse drive and partial road closure on top killer.
So any time someone submits this type of application, we do have to reach out to all the utilities and service providers that may have infrastructure in that easement. I have objection letters on both applications at this time, so they will not be-
From neighbors?
No, from the utility companies and service providers. They do have the lines in the easement, and so they are objecting to the road closures in both applications, and so they will not be moving forward at this time. If an easement or some other arrangement can be dedicated to them or worked out, then we'll put it back on the agenda.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Do we need to go through denying it, or are we just gonna leave it open?
I think we'll leave it open for now, and one of them is trying to see if there's a potential way to move forward, but we may put them back to deny next month, depending on what happens.
Okay, thank you. Item six is again discussion of possible action regarding enamending a portion of ordinance 2422, specifically residential accessory structures. And so continuing from our workshop, we worked through some pictures, comments from our commissioners, comments from the public, and now we're up to the portion where I'd like to ask staff to refresh our thoughts and what further work they've done to come up with what we hope will be a final draft that we can prove at our next meeting, maybe with a tweak here or there, that we can then pass on to the city council. So with that, we will turn, hold discussion back over to you, Ms. Rebecca.
Thank you, Bernd. So I would like to start at a high level and kind of work into the details. And so just off of the overlay map, which on the packet email I sent out, there's a link there, so it's kind of a live map that I made off of free online resource. But this kind of shows all of the areas, and so I would like to start off with where we would not want to see metal accessory buildings for residential lots. And what I have here is the historic landmark district, which is kind of outlined, it's underneath the other two layers, but I feel that that is the area. It does include a little bit of residential, especially on the south side, and I would say it would be, not be appropriate, or it wouldn't be flattering to the area to have the metal accessory structures there. We also talked about last month having a thousand-foot overlay from the center line of Noble as well as Division, to really, you know, when people enter Guthrie off of I-35, we want our, the welcome mat to our community to be aesthetically pleasing, and so anything, anything new residentially that would go in as an accessory, having facades, what we, I guess, decide on is acceptable facades, or keeping with the facades listed in our 2009 ordinance, we would like to see those carried out in those two overlays. There was a discussion in this packet about including more of the area as an additional overlay or district around the Masonic Temple that also would capture the homes in Highland Park and even the neighborhood north of that. I have a blue line, I didn't fill in that area, but that was potentially an area that could also be added. And I know we had talked about in the workshop around the temple extending the boundary to that eastward, and so I have, I have that in my notes. I guess my question to you all is, are there any areas, districts, neighborhoods in your mind that belong in this category that have not been addressed? Do we feel that the thousand feet is-
You have the thousand feet, now we're looking right here, this is showing, how far does this thousand, is your chart at the other end of town by Vance?
Right, yes.
Owners, and so we're seeing a thousand feet all along Noble, and then we're going to turn and go down Division?
Yeah, so it would be the entirety of the city limits.
I have, I have one question, because like on this overlay, well, on this one, so you can see that it goes down to Springer, right? Does that include both sides of the street? Because it looks like it stops on the-
It does look like it stops on this one.
Yeah, so it should include the houses on both sides of Springer.
So it should go down another block.
Half block.
Well, yeah, to the alley line.
Half, till the alley line, mhm.
Yeah, I was gonna ask, does the thousand feet overlay well with the grid? Does it go along the street lines?
I just don't think, I don't think that, I don't think there should be any street where the people across the street can have it and people on the other side.
I agree.
So-
Good point, good point. So that would be, and I don't know if that would run into, let me see here, yeah, you need to go to a street and then it, both sides are included.
Okay, so we would, so I have roughly two and a half blocks on either side of Noble, that would be the thousand feet, so would we want to extend that out to be a full three blocks, and whatever that distance is, adopt that for the entirety?
I would say yes.
Yes.
Well, is there a way that you could word it so that if you go to Noble, that you can say that it takes in both sides of, whether it's Noble, whether it's Division, takes in both sides of the street? Is there a way you could do that?
Yeah. Because if you do another block, then you're gonna have the same problem.
You go to another block, you go to the block, same problem.
Actually, but actually, on the north side, on the north side of the Noble overlay, it looks like whatever street it goes over to, both sides of the street are included. You see that?
Well, again, is there a way to put it?
And even, even on the south side of the Noble overlay, on the west side, it looks like both sides of the street are included.
So the verbiage needs to say that.
Yeah, like if you say, well, you can make your own.
I guess the only place, really the only place, really the only place I've noted where both sides of the street are included is on this map.
Okay, and I've got, I've got a note here to move to the alley, right here. And then in those, when we have those districts, they'll have the title, like the Noble overlay, but then we can be specific about where those boundaries are, that it's southbound to Street X and northbound to, so that there's, that's clearly defined.
Well, the Noble overlay, wouldn't it be, it would, it would be southbound to the interstate, right? I mean, the Division overlay.
Division overlay.
It's southbound, yeah, it's to the highway.
Well, that doesn't show it there.
It doesn't show it here, but it does go all the way to the highway.
Yes, yes.
We don't, we don't have one on the Noble, on the Division overlay, you know, we don't have to pick for that anymore.
You could really confuse people and just say it goes all the way in both situations to 35.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would, it'd use 35.
No, I didn't, I have the live link in your, in the email that I sent out, but since Division is so long, by the time I put it there, the map was like unreferential.
That's true.
So, but yeah, so the idea is, is that that welcome mat or that carpet rolls out all the way across town for city limits, so that when people are driving in, whether it's on 33, or they're exiting off 35, on, on 153, on Division, that they're getting, they're getting the aesthetics that we want to see on those.
Both entrances, entry and exit.
On all four, I guess, yeah.
Again, what is the blue, what is that, the blue line?
Right, the blue-
This is up past the high school.
Mm-hmm, that blue line that I included would just encompass Highland Park and then this other neighborhood, and that was, that was just a thought.
Sure you're seeing this in the area.
Oh, this blue line is a thought of overlay.
Sure you're seeing that whole area there.
Yeah.
Is that right?
And that was up for discussion, that wasn't something we talked about last month, but just, you know, just brainstorming with you all, if there are any areas that need extra protection, and just, just-
And the reason I say that is because most of that particular neighborhood has a covenant that wouldn't allow them anyway. It would be nice for the, and not all of that neighborhood is under the covenant, there aren't existing metal buildings there to include, and I don't know if anyone from those neighborhoods, I've talked to a couple of people from that neighborhood that said that they were gonna talk to the city about trying to get an overlay for basically what is the neighborhood, just before you get to upper elementary to the, to the right, all the way over to Pine.
Is that Nelson Heights, or do you-
No, Nelson Heights.
Do you have something else?
I think it's Highland, Highland, it's Highland something.
I think it's Highland, yes.
Highland something, can't remember, is it Highland Heights? It's Highland something.
It's on my head.
And you're-
I would, I would say that would be a great move.
Okay.
So again, you're going up, you're carrying it up Pine, and across, what is that, what's the road up there that we're going across?
Um, I can pull, I can pull that up, it's not legal, but-
What's the one just before the cemetery, up there?
Is that College?
No, College is down below there, then, you can see College down there.
One second.
Okay, that's Hillcrest Avenue.
Is it Hillcrest?
Hillcrest, that's right.
It is Hillcrest, thank you.
Hillcrest, not Highland.
Okay, Hillcrest.
And so that was just a potential thought, and that also, you've got Dominion House in that area, and, and there's definitely historical homes around that, so that would, that would also be in this area.
And what would be the reason, for instance, that you didn't run Hillcrest clear across, square it off, rather than dropping down and doing that, would just, I'm sure you have a reason for it, right here and here, instead of running it clear out across? Let me see what I'm saying.
I see what you're talking about, this would just be square, just south, south of the school.
That's true, just south of the school, and that's something we could, we could do as well.
Don't you think it would be easier to describe it rather, get to-
Well, and about a half of that neighborhood's gonna fall into the overlay anyway, so now you would have the back half that could potentially have something, and the front half that can-
Yeah, that just causes problems.
So I would say too, I can extend that to cricks.
I just square it off. Because midtown overlay is, overlaps a lot with this proposed addition.
Yeah.
You know, in the future, she may have, and correct me if I'm going in an area that's not what you were thinking, but these entry points, these four entry points are the welcome mat, and keeping it to that may be a convenient way of making sure that there's more heavy, more, more requirements for that. If we go like into a Hillcrest or some of those other areas, that could easily be a third overlay, that maybe those, those requirements may be a little softer or something like that.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
And, and then it could also include other areas that aren't within this, open, open the, the front door, the, the welcome mat of Division and Noble.
And I think they were referring to, I think this has been referred to as the midtown overlay.
Right, because I would imagine people living not within the two-long Noble and Division areas would not want to have the, the same requirements as the other, as the Division and Noble people will like.
Well, and part of the Division and Noble thing is that a lot of it's commercial, so they'll be, they'll have a totally different, I mean, I imagine our existing guidelines will still apply there where it has to be a certain percent.
Forty percent, forty, forty percent metal.
Yeah, or windows, which has been working well.
So now you're really thinking about running that on across, is that right?
Yeah, I think that makes sense, so I've got that here, and I can, when I redefine these boundaries, I can send that back out.
So what is this particular overlay, is it gonna have a different name? Is it part of, what does that area become? This area, right, right there?
Right.
Here, does it become part of historic, or is it separate, different name?
I wouldn't, I don't know.
It won't have to be.
Well, I have, the historic landmark district is-
Just the blue, right now.
Is what, yeah, I don't want to confuse it with that, because that's its own-
Little thing.
Mm-hmm, but I mean, I guess I'm open to suggestions on that, I just kind of got started with maybe that's an area we need additional protection on.
North Guthrie, you could call it North Guthrie overlay, you've got the midtown one.
It would be part of the Noble overlay.
And then you've got the Noble and the Division.
Yeah, perfect, yeah.
Can you maybe call it North Guthrie for now? Is that what you're calling it?
Part man?
North Guthrie?
Yeah.
Okay, Guthrie overlay, so. Okay, and any other comments on districts or overlays before we get into the details?
Okay.
Okay.
Well, thanks for the work.
Yes.
That's great.
It was well thought out.
Okay, so if you'll go to the discussion paper, and we'll kind of go through some of the, the details, and I'll start under number two, and we've got some different bullet points that are bolded, and we'll start with number, so, you know, this has come up several times, should residences be limited to the number of accessory buildings that they can have on their residential lot?
And are we going to say under 200 square feet and over? Is that what we're, are we addressing both, both sides of that?
Yeah, we would be addressing both sides of that, we have several city lots that have multiple 200 and under, so they were never permitted and maybe not contacted about getting the right setback, and now there's maybe four or five.
Well, now you have to do something, I know that there's a, you know, there's, there's a house on the west side, sort of, it's east of you, I bet they've got seven lining up all the way, there's like seven accessory buildings all the way around the back.
But there's little 200 under one, yeah.
Yes, yeah, there's like seven of them.
It's a slight overkill.
So I mean, it has to be, yeah, it has to be addressed.
And so that can be, that can be number, we could have something-
I just think you shouldn't be able to have more than two, right?
I would, I would go, I would go with two.
Whether big or large, not more than two.
Yeah, a lot of, a lot of homes don't have a, they may have a detached garage, or they don't, like our house, we don't have a detached garage, we don't have a garage.
Right.
And so, you know, we have one shed that we, that we put up, that's for lawn equipment and whatnot, but-
Do you think there's a need for more than two?
A lot of times people, if they don't have a garage, then where do they put a lot of the stuff that people will put in the garage?
Right.
So I do think that we should limit the number.
But they could have two sheds.
Yeah, two, right, right, two seems reasonable.
So be it under 200 square feet or over the 200 square feet?
Doesn't matter, just two buildings.
Or over, suggest, suggest two, max?
I think two.
And if you live in a house that doesn't have a garage, then your garage is an accessory building.
Yes, right.
Okay, so do we say if you're gonna have two accessory buildings, the total combined square footage does not exceed X?
Well, if they're, if they're the ones under 200 square feet, they don't have to permit them, they're, they're, plenty is now asking that they at least tell for-
I think, I think that would fall, this is just a thought, I just think that would fall under the size, square footage allowed for the property.
Permit.
Right, so if you-
Can we say no more than two anywhere, everywhere, as far as the number?
Yeah, no more than two, and you could ask for a variance.
But the maximum square footage could be limited by?
Well, that's gonna depend on the size of the lot, the size of the home.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the, that's the next bullet point, as far as number, two seems-
But I just think number two seems like a reasonable thing.
And I think most of, even if they were under 200-
I don't want my neighbor to put three.
If they were under 200 square feet, I can imagine-
I don't even put two in his backyard, but that's where you're-
It's an awful lot.
But if you put 260 ones, or you got 320 square feet, and, and, but if you had a thousand-square-foot home, that's still under 50% of the, the home size, so even if, I'm talking about the ones that are not permitted, that don't have to be permitted, but now you're asking, you're asking now, and again, how do we get this information to the public? Good point from Chris, is to, even though you don't have to permit it, please come in and talk to us about where, where you ought to, where you want to put it, and we will discuss it, so we don't see that gets done.
Okay, so we see something that, you know, two or less of 200 square feet, period.
And of course, the rules-
And anything more than-
And the rules that I've read them, even though they don't have to be permitted, they have to follow all the guidelines of the existing buildings.
Right.
They couldn't be, they'd have to be behind the, the back building line, they'd have to-
Maybe some wild color, complement to color structure.
Is there, could there be a difference between a, a accessory building permit and a structural building code type permit, like, you might get a signed permit, and that's more of a, you're just checking with the city to make sure you meet the requirements versus a permit to construct a-
Under 200 square foot building, is that what you're saying?
Right, because if you're wanting them to check with the city first, and they're signing off on it, that's a kind of a-
What is the reason for that? That they don't have to get a permit?
If it's less than 200, they're usually not plumbing and electrical and that kind of thing.
Really nothing to respect, and-
Yeah, or footings or anything.
Mm-hmm, and then just the sheer quantity, that would take up a lot of, of staff time to, but we do ask that they, or the current procedure is we ask that they call and get the setback that they're supposed to buy by for their lots, for their rear and side yard.
But again, to me, it's easy to say-
So you have to survey the property line and stuff.
To me, that's easy to say, but how do you get the average homeowner that, you know, doesn't even, I didn't even think about getting a permit myself when I got mine that was under 200 square foot, here I was a licensed general contractor, it never even occurred to me to do that with the city, so I think it's very difficult to assume that those homeowners are gonna come in and say, I want to put one in here, and I know it's under 200 square feet, but you're gonna tell me where to put it, I just don't see that happening.
And the only reason, the only way that that being a problem for anybody is if they placed it in a place that irritated their neighbor.
Yeah, and then you get a call.
Because if nobody, if nobody complains about it, it's not gonna be a problem.
Right.
Probably if it irritates the neighbor, it's probably in a bad spot, in which case maybe they can move it.
Yeah.
And we'll, we'll think on that one maybe, on the 200 and under, but I, I do like the two, that would give you a detached garage, and then some type of shed for your equipment or treasures, and on size, and so we have, we've kind of gone over things to think about, half the size of your primary structure, we've talked about a percentage of impervious surface for your total lot, because we don't want stormwater runoff to flood your neighbor, we've talked about that, and we've talked about a percentage of the total lot that you could have, the two and a half percent potentially, what are some thoughts on that? And do we, do we change those aspects depending on if it's a traditional city lot versus getting into like your acreages?
Did you, I'm assuming you came up with some discussions for us to, to look at having to do with acreages, where it was a half acre, three quarters, and you came up with some percentages and stuff, do I assume that maybe you checked what some of the other cities are doing to just, because we used to do that, we had no problem in checking what other folks were doing, did you do some of that, is that what some of those figures came up with?
So those figures that are in there right now are the same as Oklahoma City's, but I will tell you, that was the, the original draft, it was from last month. Now, I do think that they were overly generous, probably.
I agree.
But what we found out looking at 10 different communities is every community really tailored that ordinance to meet their needs, because each community is unique with what they have and the type of residential, and so we did not find like, there wasn't a cookie cutter ordinance out there, it was really tailored to meet the needs of that community, and then I would say even within Guthrie, we have so many different areas that if you had never been here, and I put five pictures up on the screen of different residential areas, and I said, are these all in the same town? Most people would say no, and so that's where I think that we have like some massaging out of details to do, because now that we have kind of the overlay districts, and, and the, the North Guthrie and the midtown district, and we have those out of the way, what is appropriate for the rest of Guthrie? And I think, I do think that the, the size of the buildings needs to probably come down off that original, it was, it was pretty generous, but I don't know, I don't know exactly, I don't have a perfect answer for what that number is, the magic number.
What if, what if staff maybe write it in?
They're gonna write many.
Well, so it could be a either or, it would have to meet certain criteria, so for instance, if your house is 2,000 square feet, you could have half of that, so you could have a thousand. I will tell you that, that most of the buildings are on like the 30-foot tresses, so you're gonna find it's very common for people to ask for a 30 by 30, a 30 by 40, and a 30 by 50, because that's how they're made, and then if they, you know, are asking for a lead to or something on top of that, you know, add that in, and, but that 30 foot is kind of like what you're working with on your width, and then they would just change out the length. And so we get, I think from our last meeting and the draft, minutes that were just approved, let's see, well, two of those were 30 by 40s, one, one had a lead to, but I would say for the larger lots, people that, just saying from what we get in, people that have over an acre are asking for a 30 by 40, so I'm-
1,200 square feet.
Mm-hmm, 1,200 square feet, and so I'm just putting that out there, and I, I do think there's a difference in someone requesting that that has an acreage, an acre or more, versus someone in town that goes, I really need this 30 by 40, but it's really going to increase my impervious surface, and I'm probably gonna flood my neighbor at this point by putting something that large in. And so is an acre a magic number, or do we think point seven five, or when we start talking about-
Larger buildings.
Larger buildings, where do we think half an acre, where do we think it starts becoming acceptable?
I don't think half an acre isn't bigger than that.
There's an awful lot of-
Because then when you're looking at the two point, is the 2.5 thing, is that a-
Two, 2.5% you mean?
Yeah.
It can be a thing. It can, it can be a thing.
Well, I mean, two point five percent, if you live on, if you live on half, well, if you live on half an acre, you're not gonna be able to have hardly anything, right? No, it would be five hundred square feet.
Forty three five sixty.
Five hundred and something, and if you have an acre, it'd be a thousand.
And like a two car garage is like roughly like five seventy six. Yeah, five seventy five, five seventy six, just to give you a.
So you could have four cars and a.
So about a point, two point five on a on an acre would be two times four thirty five, four thirty six, about eight hundred. Forty three five sixty is my whole point, point oh two five, you got a calculator here? That's pretty good size, I think there's an awful lot of acre lots.
Five percent of an acre?
There she goes, look at that.
I'm so smart. What?
Square feet, we want square feet.
How many acre lots do we have in town, in the city?
So everything out by Guthrie Lake and Liberty Lake is in town, in within city limits.
Okay.
And those average.
On this map perhaps, but outside of the overlay overlays, do we have any acre lots?
No.
That, no.
Close enough.
Okay.
They would be like.
Yeah, there would be some like, yeah.
Be a few.
These, these out here.
Maybe.
Are acre lots.
East of Pine, that.
There's a, there may be a, yeah, east east of Pine. No, we, well, west of Pine, that whole neighborhood up in there.
Oh, that one as well.
But that's the one that have a covenant as well. Uh, doesn't allow no buildings.
Mister Chapel, if I calculate, that's about a thousand eighty seven square feet.
For an acre.
Thousand for two and a half percent on an acre.
That's right.
And and again, if you had a two thousand square foot house, times fifty percent, 'cause it's another another, with that, there's another thousand square feet. Certainly an acre, yeah, there's a lot of acre ones out where we live out, you know, acre, two acre, out around Lake Guthrie, that's what I'm saying. And I'm sure, I'm sure eventually Liberty Lake and an awful lot of those, uh, so.
Don't you think that sounds sort of good? Like two point five?
No, I'm sure in your situation, that's still gonna be big enough, this gentleman.
Well, I'd be. Our house is only gonna be fifteen fifty.
Yeah, but we also.
We have two and a quarter acres.
But we were gonna basically include your full overhang to get you a little bit better.
Right, oh, your porch is, yeah, we have eleven hundred square feet of porch, over eleven hundred square feet of porch.
If you base it off of the lot size and not the home size.
Did you get a text from Aaron?
Uh, now you're you're residential out there.
Yes, sir.
And I I heard your your spouse mentioned a couple of tractors, and you've got two and a quarter acres, so we're gonna do a little farming, a little.
We just wanna build a little shop so we can just team clear maybe eventually have chickens later on after we quit traveling and.
Okay.
You know, maintain.
Because again, theoretically residential, no livestock, things like that, unless we're grandfathered in.
Exactly.
And so most folks want a nice, you know, a shop. For my my bores and, you know, your tools, things like that, you have to have a couple of tractors.
And see, we we inherited a building that's already on there. But then we have a detached garage, so if we're only limited to two buildings, then. We're kinda out.
So that two building thing would be tough on you guys?
It'd be way tough, I'd have to tear down the little, the little building and build a new one. Which I really wouldn't wanna do that, I mean, it was built probably in the eighties, I would think. And we'd probably have to apply for a warrant. Yeah. In a special condition. And then my lot actually is not very deep, but it's six hundred and five feet of front.
I think you remember, remember that.
Are we thinking of basing it off of a combination of lot size and home size, or one or the other?
I think both probably need to be taken into consideration.
Never would want the accessory building to be larger than the. No matter how big the little, or towers.
I think that we talked earlier about height, but it sounded like everyone was pretty agreeable that. The height of the accessory building should not be taller than the primary structure.
That's correct.
And does that, what happens when you have a two story house? Can you have a RV sto, you know, accessory garage, because now you can.
Whole new deal.
It is a whole.
Cause we have an RV, but it's only eleven feet tall, so.
But I guess that's, you know, my mind was thinking single story, but that's not always the case. And and so would we say?
If it's two story, then half the height.
Then half the height, yeah.
Well, could, I mean, does that make sense?
I have an accessory building that's two stories.
You have a carriage house, don't you? Yeah, and that's something to consider as well.
The house is three stories.
Well, yeah, well, there you have it, still half.
So I'm still, I'm still over.
You're over half.
Yes.
That's a good question, head start on that one.
You know, one thing is we're discussing this accessory buildings and and our garage or something, or cars. That we have not touched on, and I don't wanna muddy the waters, we can. What what about the accessory buildings?
We have to make an allowance for that, right?
Well, I mean, if you put fourteen foot sidewalls, you're basically, the peak is gonna be a two story building, basically, it's gonna be. Eighteen, seventeen to eighteen feet, and that's about what our house is, probably, 'cause our house is two stories. But it's.
Well, I just.
Up on a hill, and then the shop is gonna be, you know, another ten feet lower with the grade.
Then, yeah.
So.
You'd have to look at the elevation.
I'm sorry, say.
I just feel like if it's not taller than the house, it's all right. That's my thought.
Yeah.
Cause it's not towering over the house.
I would agree.
Yeah.
I think we're trying to stay away from something that's just dwarfing the house and.
And so is that a combination of things, we're taking like two and a half percent of the lot size?
Yes, or.
We have that fifty percent deal in this, fifty percent of the size of the main house too.
Yeah, but that would, that would be an.
And no more?
But I would think that would be in, in areas where it's less than a half acre, right? Where you, where, where you, the building couldn't be the fifty percent of the size of your home if you're. Well, God, that's sort of, that's sort of hitting somebody in the, you know, why can't I? Seems like two point five percent would be a good measure.
On, on, are you still?
As long as it's not bigger than the house.
Yeah, are you still planning to give us less than one half acre?
Was that?
No breakdown, uh, three quarter, we still gonna break those picture?
That's all debatable, I guess.
What was that?
Well, the first deal, we had lots less than a half acre, lots one half acre and greater, but less than one and one half acre.
That was the general.
That was the general one, are we still gonna, are we gonna, what are you thinking, this was two, two?
I think that may have been, yeah, we might consolidate it, I mean, the the two and a half percent is going to cover.
Every, everybody.
The, yeah, everybody, but it's also going to protect us as far as too much impervious surface on one lot and flooding issues.
And it's also gonna treat everybody equally.
Yeah.
You know, you're not gonna have a different.
Your proportion to your, your land.
And then the only thing that would step in between that is the size of the home. It couldn't exceed the size of the home.
Or half the size?
Half the size of the home is what we originally seen, fifty percent of the size.
Well.
Half the size.
What if you had three acres, you could two and a half percent of three acres?
Oh, yeah.
You know, I I I think you ran into six, if you use two and a half percent across three and a half acres, my gosh, suddenly, you only got a three thousand. Square foot hole, you could suddenly be putting a lot, much larger building, being allowed to. Maybe you need to have perhaps, maybe both of those parameters.
Say that one more time, Brad.
In other words, the two and a half percent certainly for the acre works well, but then, or or no more than fifty percent of the size of the home.
But if you're.
That was another one.
But if you're on, but if you're on, if you're on four acres, you've got a two thousand square foot home. You couldn't have anything but a thousand square foot building, correct?
That would be, that would be the situation, but if you're on two acres and then you wanna go two and a half percent of that, or three acres, you could. Put something in larger than your home if you only got a two thousand square foot hole too. Uh, I think you need to somehow address both issues. Uh, and how do we do that?
You know, would, variants would have.
Variance is, then the ordinance really isn't, doesn't mean it.
Exactly, that that kinda negates the whole thing unless there's some kind of guidelines on that, but.
There, does there need to be a dividing one between an acre plus and an acre, or an under acre? It sounds like those are becoming more and more different.
If you're rather than.
There's not, right, there's not one answer for.
Rather than going for watching one half acre. You hate to. You ju, you hate to, part of my thought is you hate to restrict someone with a smaller home on an acreage from having. A building that's at least the size of their home. That's still limiting it somewhat.
Yeah, I mean, this is a good example of those kinds of things, where, you know, they have a couple of tractors and and all this, but they need that.
Right, and they have two and a half acres.
That's where I'm really gonna die, and play in my shop.
So maybe you start with lots that are an acre or less, we were using that one instead of. All right, then where would our next division want to go? Holloway? You got one and a half acres or greater, but less than three, and then you got one year over three.
I think, I think we could consolidate that and have under an acre and over an acre, because those seem to be separate animals.
Okay.
All right, then what, if you did the, under the acre one, that's fine, the same.
So under acre is half the house. And over an acre, it can be as big as the house. But not taller.
But not larger than the house either.
Not larger, not larger or taller.
If you had a ha, a quarter of an acre and you did the two and a half percent, what would that look like?
A quarter of an acre, a fourth of what we just chucked out.
About two, not much bigger than the small story.
Two hundred fifty.
So I I think the fifty percent of the home maybe applies to less than an acre.
Less than acre, apply the fifty percent.
Yeah. That's a little, it does give them a little bit of. How much do we get paid for this?
All the coffee you want.
And is this the, is this the combined, if you have two, is this the combined footprint of both?
Yes, that would be it.
Yeah.
This, yeah, so however detached garage and shop, just detached garage, that's all, that's all you get.
By the way, if we're speaking detached garage, we haven't, I hate to muddy the waters any further, but we gotta cross the bridge one of these days. What about these little pop ups? Is that a detached garage? I talk about those carports.
No, we do not, so we do not permit carports, uh, we could talk about them.
But they're an accessory building.
We do not inspect them. Uh, because they don't meet wind ratings. And we're not going to say, well, the city came out and they said it was good, and then this tornado came through and.
Wiped it out.
Yeah, so I don't know.
So we don't allow them?
They're, they're in town.
Yes, they are.
But they, but they haven't, they haven't been allowed in some time.
Right, yeah.
Well, you, since it's, I guess it's viewed as an accessory building, would it not be?
Yes. We had this argument long before you were here, because we had someone on staff that said that they weren't. They didn't need to be permitted because they're not an accessory building.
But you're saying you can't sign off on them because they really not, don't meet basic building standards.
Yeah, and designers, they don't.
They're just.
Allow for it.
Yeah.
You just can't allow them.
No.
But they're, that's a big deal.
That being said.
That's, that's another, that's another avenue.
Maybe that's for another.
Yeah, but.
Yeah, cause that doesn't.
They gotta fall under.
Several hours.
They still have to fall under the accessory building thing, or, you know, or then, or then they could go anywhere.
But I.
They're not an accessory building, they go in the front yard.
Some of them are very temporary, like, almost like a tint.
Yeah, there's definitely variations when it comes to carports.
Uh, we've, we've had a lot of, a lot of problems, complaints on the front yards, and it's, and it's impending view of the neighbors and.
No.
And yet, or, yet you just bought a new car and you're, you're got a hailstorm coming, how you gonna protect that car? Yeah, I, there's something to be said about that, you know, darn it, a lot of people have enclosed their garages, and now they don't wanna have a garage.
Well, let's save that one for another day, for, that one might keep this here past.
What else do you have that we, we need to discuss on these that you're gonna continue on?
Okay, roof type, and so we did, you know, in some of the pictures, we showed like what a one foot overhang really adds and kind of softens. Uh, the building, and would we require a pitch roof? And we had some proposed pitches in the other draft ordinance, I'm. I'm really open on that, is a flat or slope roof allowable, or are we going to ask for a minimum pitch?
Do you recall, I'm trying to find what you request, you 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 suggested last time.
Sure, I can pull that.
I I have it here, but you can tell me where it's at.
Okay.
Yeah, there's gotta be a little.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we had a minimum of a four twelve pitch, okay, which would be ten feet to the roof peak. On, on one of those thirty foot wide buildings.
They sure look better.
I agree.
I agree.
And you, you carried that particular pitch through regardless of whether you have a, eight and a half or whatever, didn't you?
We carried the four twelve through. And then. And, okay, location.
What is the consensus that?
I'm sorry. Consensus, no flat roofs?
No flat roofs.
Okay, no flats, okay. And location, so, uh, we've seen pictures of them being all over. Obstructing the neighbor's front yard view, being in the side yard. Are we, are we saying that your accessory building should be, um, behind the rear building line? And therefore it should meet the appropriate side yard setback?
Yes.
And then if, if you have a, an interesting elevation or.
Or you have an unusual piece of property, you can turn it for a variance.
Variance, but that would be a.
I think their property was certainly qualified for that, where it's long, and maybe they can't put something behind that, we've heard, we've heard that, but I think, I think that would. Would be a good idea.
Say the current setback requirement is.
For the majority?
It depends on if it's R one.
But if, you know, even in those cases, you would try to get people to put it as far back as they could. So that the house is still a prominent feature on this ground, it's a good idea.
Where you put it, prominent, yep.
And then.
So what are we saying, what about located on the side yard, any long end lots, okay, I mean, but with, what, with a, with a variance request?
Write that in, just.
Right, it would, yeah.
Just be a variance, so this is why you can, but you have an unusual property, if you want to offer a variance.
Then there's that opportunity. And then we have mentioned corner lots.
Yes.
And those being just a, a unique type, and because they essentially have two front yards. So what are our thoughts on that, we're calling both sides front yards, and does it matter? Which way your home is oriented, if it's diagonal across that corner lot, or if it faces one street versus the other?
I just think that if it's gonna be built between your home and your neighbors, no matter where they exist. That it has to be behind the front line of your house. And the sideline of your house, and the front line of your neighbor's home. Can you do that? And what I'm talking about is what I drew here. Because say, say for example, say for example, this, this is a block, right?
Okay.
Okay, this is a house, this is their accessory building, this is their neighbor's front porch, all right, and this happened. Their house may extend out a little bit over here, see? But see, to build it behind their, their building line on this side. Um, they could have moved the house here, but it still would have been in front of their neighbor's house.
So where's your, where's the? Is the house or the lot?
Their neighbor's front building line needs to be considered into it too, so that they don't have a metal building in their front yard.
Is this the lot or the house?
Draw a quarter lot.
That's not gonna happen that often.
If it happens once, that's too much.
Yeah.
Right.
So I mean, I would just, that, and that would be my deal, it needs to be behind the front line, behind your sideline, and it has to be behind the front line of your neighbor's.
Draw, draw a corner line.
And generally, that's just an adjustment, a little adjustment.
Just put a corner lot here, put a house right here, all right. This is the front, this is the front, I mean, you just.
Right, and here's your neighbor.
Okay, down there, hit its house.
Yes, and this is his front porch.
Well, okay.
Right? Right? Here's his driveway.
You're saying he may be behind this side.
Yeah, and so this guy wants to put a, a building behind his house, that building should be here. Not out here.
So the view from here doesn't get blocked, is that what you're saying?
Is this the backyard right here?
This guy doesn't have a, you know, a lot of, this is what I'm talking, that, this is the guy's backyard, see, but it's also, and we have that a lot on corners in Guthrie, where there's a, you know, a big house with a backyard and then a smaller house behind it.
Yeah, and almost anything they do in the backyard is gonna, gonna affect that neighborhood.
You know, and even like, right, your carriage house is built very much like that. You know, it's, it's placed far enough back, even as recessed as the house is that is behind you, your carriage house is recessed so that it's not, uh, in view from their front porch.
So how do you put that into words, basically?
Well, it's just, you're just adding the neighbors.
Normally we would require, normally we require this to be behind the rear of the house, right?
Well, this is the, oh, I should have made this clear, this is the front of this house.
Oh, okay.
Oh, okay.
See, this is the garage, this is the front of this house, and the back of this house, see?
Is there side yard?
So this building would be in the backyard, but because your, their house sticks out further, these people could come out and, and, and have a, their new view is a, is a metal building from, or a building. Even, this doesn't even, this doesn't even matter if you're talking metal or wood.
Yeah.
Right, it's just the first thing they see.
This happened, this happened to us on Lake Road, by the way, one of the garages over here, this happened to us on Lake Road. Exactly, the gentleman, they wanted to put the, the house back here, and, and we just, we weren't able to do it.
Yeah, and, and.
It was gonna affect this, this home here.
Yeah. I just feel like it needs to be behind, if you're on a corner lot, it needs to be behind your front building line, your side building line facing the street, and behind the front profile of your neighbor's building line.
Yes.
Might be a way to put it.
That's just.
Yeah, that's the easiest way to put it.
Well, it's gotta be behind your neighbors, because I mean, this is about how neighbors affect neighbors.
It's kind of that unwritten contract we have in the neighborhood.
You know, and so I know what happens, cause I was talking to a gentleman this week. That one's a little, you know, uh, and, you know, somewhere during our conversation, I was explaining, you know, why these things are complicated, and he said, but, you know, I'm not thinking about anybody else, this is what I want. And, and I, and I said, I understand what you're saying to me, but everything, I mean, you live in Guthrie and what you want to do is going to impact everyone who lives around you. And he wasn't being, you know, and honestly, he wasn't being rude or mean or anything, he just wanted what he wanted. And I said, I, I understand, we all do.
Well, and especially when you move out in the country, you think, well, that's part of the perks of living out in the country.
And that is.
And, and, and one of the drawbacks to living in Guthrie to many individ- uh, well, uh, the sort of independent spirits is that you're living in a historical town in Guthrie and, uh, you know, the ultimate design was not to have any of them in the whole town, like when you go to Hot Springs, Arkansas, they don't allow them, period. Well, we're way too far down that road now. So that's why we're working so hard to come up with something that is more lenient to our suburban, our suburban areas.
And Ray Frank, Chris, you bring up a good point, because when the area out around the lake was annexed, there's a lot of pluses to being annexed, but then suddenly there's criteria and rules and regulations, and a lot of those folks didn't understand that side of it and they, they're a little difficult to understand exactly. They wanna do what they wanna do, they don't need to be nasty or be.
No, no, there's nothing wrong with it, wanting to do what you wanna do.
So have you. You can come up with some thoughts of how that could be.
Everybody wants to do it that way.
I think we're good there. And the next one, I think, is we've, uh, ironed out, but, uh, building permit. Max size before it requires a permit, two hundred and under, nope, over that, yes.
Yeah.
I guess again, my only question, I don't know what can we do about it other than putting reminders in our daily, in our monthly deal is that even though a permit is not required, I, I, maybe occasionally we put a reminder in there every quarter, once a quarter, something about, here's what is required. Comment or advise the city planning what you wanna do pertaining to this. So that hopefully, we're getting through some folks, that they still do need to, to talk, to somebody down here.
Setback, setback.
Yes, and when we do have a final product and we're comfortable and we send that on to council and that gets adopted, maybe that'll be a good opportunity to put that in the, uh, utility bill, a news letter, and let people know that, hey, things have changed and.
And we could get something in the papers.
It's pretty good in the Guthrie leader, also the career.
Yeah.
From Guthrie News Page.
Yeah, we have social media, so we can provide a link to the, the full ordinance, yeah, so.
Guthrie Strong.
I don't think I can work with my habit issue at all.
Okay.
Guthrie Page where no one gets deleted, that'll, that, that'll always be a great conversation over there.
Okay, I'm gonna, the next one's aluminum siding.
Aluminum siding, okay, so is citywide prohibition of aluminum or metal siding for residential accessory buildings necessary or practical, are there areas where they should be acceptable? And I think we've kind of ironed that out, uh, with our districts here, so no metal here.
Yeah. Good, good, yeah. Yeah.
And then if you're outside of that, um, then that's, that's where you could do something within the guidelines, yeah.
Reason, and usually you're talking about a half, if, in, a half acre or less.
Now, didn't you and the city manager go get into something about so that the building didn't look so, if there's such a way to put it, blatantly metal?
Right.
Uh, having to do with the way the ribbing was or, or something to soften that look, is there, is there a way to address that at all? To allow the metal buildings, cause there's some very good metal building products nowadays.
Right.
But still not have it just reach out and slap you in the face, you know, to some, so that it, it still has a little bit of a blend to maybe other finishes and textures, anything to do with that?
Well, I just felt like that the building that I took a picture of yesterday in Guthrie, that house, um.
But again, did you guys, what, what do you think?
This one, you know, and it was up there and everybody saw it on TV, but I mean, that just did not, it would not strike you as metal building.
That's more about, is that about the color?
And, and the dark rough, that dark brown rough and the light color, I mean, just.
The size. Yeah.
I think the fact that it has a ship lap, ship lap, lap look to it.
Yeah, and that, that, that siding with the lines run that way, it looks more like flatboard, you know, it's sort of like.
But it's vertical.
Yeah, for instance, corrugated, that's gonna connect the vertical lines.
Is it like a party board?
No, this is, it's, that's metal. Yeah, but see, the, the, the ribs are run more like, more like that house.
Horizontal.
It gives the illusion of siding or hardy board or.
Yeah, cause it kind of looks like hardy board.
Mm-hmm.
Well, it's metal, the whole thing was.
Yeah, I thought, I thought so too.
And it's a pro, it's a product.
Yeah, when it's vertical, it screams metal.
Well, again, I think in a district, you almost think that that was just ship lap.
It's gonna mimic siding.
Were we asked for that?
Uh, for, if there is corrugation, for it to go.
Oh, horizontal, is that too fishy? Instead of vertical.
I'm thinking on that.
Here's, look, this is wood and it's vertical.
Yeah, but when you, when it gets bigger, then it starts, you know what I'm saying? It's all, that looks like cedar.
But you know, it's probably.
You know what I'm saying?
It's probably.
But when it gets, when it gets to the point that it's like a thousand square foot, that cedar illusion isn't working anymore.
That's, Chris, is what they call T one eleven, probably four inch, they make it four inch and eight inch on it, you're right.
But see, if you, but if you just, but if you just, yeah, if you just run it sideways, then it looks more like.
Can you maybe at least investigate that to see if there's a.
Yeah, we had a minimum gauge on the metal.
Yes, you did.
We also had that the, um, that the paint color, that it was baked, so it's, it doesn't look like metal or as metal-ish.
Okay.
Um, so those were things that, that we had, and I think those were solid, um, I'll make a note on that.
I think they're good, they're good, they're definitely.
Right.
Does baked mean like, like a bat, a lot of shiny?
Yes. Yes, so if, yeah, it's.
Well, I think that would probably be true.
And then.
Because like even all those buildings, the sort of cool looking buildings that were upstairs, so if we showed earlier, they're all straight up and down.
Down, yeah.
Well, and if the prefab designs are already like that, it would probably cost prohibitive to make a lot of modifications.
Yeah. Just see, there's just more, but, but these are all.
Um, yeah, they're, they're not bad.
But prob- yeah, but probably, they don't, they don't look like that.
Um. As far as colorations on the walls or the roofing, are we just, are we keeping with the, I don't know how to say it better than how it was said in the current ordinance, which was, I believe, that it complements the primary structure, something to that effect. But when we, when we're visiting with applicants, it's very subjective language that what you think is complementary and what I think don't necessarily match up. And, but I don't know, I don't know that that can be said another way.
How can it, but can it be said that it, it should incorporate the same color palette as the house? That's, that's more direct.
It says, it says accessory buildings must be of similar color to.
You know, red complements.
Well, that's, you know, that's pretty good at one time.
Red, red, blue, I mean, we're doing a, a grayish blue color with white trim and a gray steel roof, and that's what we'd wanna do with our shop, would be a gray roof and then maybe a rustic red with gray trim.
I, I like to think that most people would like, would like to think that their home is the, is the focal point
Right.
when people drive up, they wanna see a nice home, hopefully, and that an accessory building blends with it somehow.
Right.
With similar color, I, I, how did we have it, where did they're?
Accessory buildings must be of similar color to the main building.
Well, I, I know for example.
If you're using a neutral-ish color, then that's, that's better than a bright.
Is that better for you to say similar color instead of the word compliment, uh, okay, what do you think?
Yeah, maybe similar colors, colors to primary.
Similar color. Or maybe you wanna say similar color and compliment, then we're throwing an extra adjective in there, whatever.
Yeah, maybe so. That, that one's just, uh.
I know, it's.
Like you said, it's subjective.
Well, so, so like, for instance, the person has, um, a brown home, you know, tan brick, dark brown paint.
Right.
And they come in and, but they, they want to do like the romantic red farm barn, you know? And we'll get that, and they go.
That happened in my neighborhood.
And they go, well, I think it's complementary, cause I have this land and it looks like a, the red storybook barn, but then their house is brown, and so when you.
But see, that happened, that happened in my neighborhood, exactly, they were putting in a storage building, they put in a wooden. Of course, I, most of the, most of the building, the houses across the street from me are sort of nineteen forty's homes, but most of the, on my side of the street are nineteen fifty's ranch style homes. And one of those homes wanted to put in a, a storage building and they got it, and then they wanted to paint it red, a red barn.
And what color was their house?
Well, the houses are all, you know, white and cream colored, so this was gonna be a red barn in a nineteen fifty's neighborhood. And, you know, it tasted a difficult thing to argue, because everybody's got different taste.
Right.
I sure was glad when I heard from the person that was doing it, the city wouldn't let her paint it red because it didn't complement her house, and so she painted it a green color.
See, I think that, I think they weren't complimentary, I think you can, I think even the city, I think you can sit and say, red just doesn't complimentary, you know, I, I think you, you could say that, and most, they might argue with you because they wanted red, but you, you can't argue that red is complimentary.
I will, I will say that it might, even, even though it's not that restrictive, it still holds you, holds, pulls people back a little bit, I guess.
Right.
What's your thoughts on that, Mr. You, you've been through some of those battles probably a, a little more time than we have.
She was hoping to never have this battle, she was hoping this had been won a long time ago.
I was, yeah, exactly. When I think of a red barn, to me, that's in an agricultural zone, you don't put a red painted shed in residential.
With nineteen, mid-century modern.
I mean, it's not a farm.
Right.
So that's.
But if your house was red?
Well, then, there you go.
Then, then it'll all red.
Then all of a sudden it kind of like blends or disappears, and, and I'm cool with that.
There you go.
Yeah.
Or you should be, you should be drugged and let your neighbors paint it, it's a problem.
There you go, and then you wake up and go, ah.
You know, normally she can be red hot.
Yeah.
Right, but just, just saying like.
Oh, I'm, I'm getting all the nightmares coming back.
Like if you had, if you had red brick and you picked out a red that was.
Terracotta.
Deeper, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, tell me it's terracotta, not red.
Of course, if, if I could make it the way I like it, I would like them to be, because I've, you know, cause we've been discussing these things for six or seven or eight years, and even longer. I've driven around a lot in the country, and when I see these, the ones that, the ones that are the most aesthetically pleasing are brown or dark green, they don't draw attention to themselves. Uh, I mean, you can literally be in your, you drive by the house and you don't even see them. But if they're white or light colors, they draw attention, you know, if they match the house, that's.
Yeah.
That makes sense, but.
Right.
Just like.
So does that answer your question?
Yeah.
I think so, so I.
My storage building is forest green, and you can't see it at all.
Blending with nature.
Even in the winter, it's just sort of, it's dark, it doesn't, you don't notice it.
I'll, I'll tell you one of the.
To me, you just don't draw attention to an accessory building.
One of the things, I just drove out to Cedar Valley here the other day, I, my brother was here busy, and, and again, there's some really lovely homes out there.
Yes.
And what is sitting out there, just blatant, might as well just reach out and hit you right in the head with a boat paddle. Everybody's tank for their.
Oh, their septic?
No, 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 for their, for their.
Propane?
Hot propane tank.
Propane tank, uh-huh.
I did see where somebody painted theirs green, you know, and it kind of went, went away with the foliage, which is gorgeous home, and here sits this large white tank.
I saw one with cow spots on it.
Well, no, that's.
It's just a blank canvas.
So it can complement the house or the cattle.
What else do we have?
No livestock in residential unless it's.
No, that's correct. That's correct.
Okay, um, so going, okay, so here's a point, um, under the next, the existing, um, residential accessory appearance standards. Um, I think, I think we've ironed out the roof. Um, I think that that is still solid on point four. Um, on exterior walls, so this is getting back to the overlays in the districts where we said, hey, no metal. Um, are we still comfortable with the materials that are listed? Um, stone, brick, wood, or wood simulated sidings? Um, materials such as aluminum siding, as well as synthetic stucco, ephist products are not historic, are not historic cladding materials and shall not be used. However, cement board materials such as hardy board may be substituted for wood siding. I still think those are solid. I don't personally have anything to add, but wanted to just rehash.
I've got no problem with that.
That, okay.
And you, you hit the roast there, I like, I like the gutters, you, on, before we just slip right away, but the gutters should basically be visually untrusive, I think that, you know, again, think about the colors and, and try to make them fit with the house. That was, you shop it.
Okay, and then I think we've gone through colors, so I was gonna have something about similar color or colors to the primary structure and, as well as complementary of the, of the primary.
And that's what you have in number eleven here, aren't they?
Uh-huh. Okay. Um, let's see, what else? We still have the, um, the design materials and, and harmonizing with the main structure, that's, I think, still relevant. Um, the definition of a, of a residential accessory building, um.
You got all that list?
Well, it's right there.
Garage workshop, no?
Yeah.
Where is that?
Bottoms that.
It's, it's a, it's a, and roll onto the next page.
Oh, the tissue work.
It does talk about, um, when you flip over that it should not be used for commercial purposes and should not be rented. Um, we also mentioned last month about allowing a, a water closet or a toilet fixture, but not allowing a full bath inside one, because then that somehow turns into an apartment.
Yeah. Yeah.
Weathermark.
Uh-huh, or a rental. Uh-huh, or a rental. Um, are we comfortable with that?
Yes.
So like essentially you could have a half bath so you can wash your hands if you've been playing with your.
I suspect you're probably gonna do something like that in yours.
We were gonna do that, yes.
Yeah, and you can, and you can live there if you go in the house to take a shower.
Well, okay, now wait a second, this is just for residential.
Little difficulty with the wife occasionally, just.
Occasionally, we're living in a hundred and seventy-five square feet currently, so. Over the last five months.
RV.
While we're building this house.
No one's been murdered.
We just had our thirty-fifth anniversary.
All right.
But we forgot.
We or see.
No, we both.
Oh, you both did, okay.
We went to Houston and we spread out in our son's house for a few days and we forgot our anniversary.
Well, happy belated anniversary.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so in a situation, now, is this just residential, small lot?
Just resi, just resi, well, residential doesn't matter on lots, we could break it out, but we're residential.
I'm, I'm picking on you guys because you guys.
Water closet, half bathroom is great.
Because you guys are, are good examples. Okay, so he is on one of his tractors and, you know, he's been out there and all that kind of thing. Um, a wash off shower before he comes in and tracks heaven knows what into the house.
He has to have a measuring with his house.
I got a water hose with a sprayer on it, that's what I use now.
I'm just throwing it out there, guys.
Yeah.
Well, you know, I think the likelihood, that probably doesn't happen a lot and I suspect if somebody.
Oh, I know.
Threw a hose up and did that.
If someone doesn't, they don't know about it, what can you do about it?
I don't, do you think this, that's, but, 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 do we need to address it?
Is, is this under the category of forgiveness rather than permission possibly?
That's correct, but we need to have it in there that they can't do it, just to feel good.
I won't do it.
He won't do it.
I'll put a drain in the floor though, it's gonna be a wet bath.
There you go, there you go.
There's gonna be a drain in the bathroom, in the half bathroom.
Well, for ease of cleaning the structure.
Exactly.
Good idea.
Okay.
Tell us.
Continuing on, you've got garage private, and what is?
Yeah, so there were examples of accessory structures. Again, the carports, we don't allow them and we don't permit them.
Okay, that's fine.
So maybe I'll just.
That's fine, if you don't allow them.
Cross that out. And then garage workshop, garden shed, gazebo, a pool house or cabana. Uh, so list is not inclusive, uh, there, there may be other ones.
I wanna, I wanna, I wanna go back to the carport thing because, um, we don't permit them and we don't allow them. So, so what happens if someone puts up a carport in Guthrie?
Well, I would say nothing has happened in the past because they're all over.
That's correct.
Uh, if they do today, that's, I guess that's a question.
Well, they should be, they should be under the same, they should be under the same regulation. I mean, there are lists as an accessory, accessory, accessory structure. They're certainly structured, they're certainly used as an accessory.
Okay, it would just like guidelines.
I mean, if they're gonna, if they're gonna have them.
I don't know that we allow them now, but they, people do have them.
Yeah, but I mean, I know that there's only, in, in, there's only been, you know, there were two that were permitted some years back on Broad Street. And they said that was gonna sort of stop to it, that sort of, that was the last time I saw any go up. Except for one on the west side. Um, that's not, my, my concern is if you don't list them, you don't permit them and you don't stop them. If they're not an accessory building, then they can be in the front yard. Or they can be any, you know, I mean, what are they?
Well, they're not, they're not supposed to be.
Well, but they need to, they, they need, they need to be listed as an accessory building.
But then you're giving permission for them to go up. In the design guidelines, in that other document, we had that it has to be, um, a two-car garage, if I recall, and closed in. There was not an allowance for building a carport.
Something like three walls or, and maybe that was the faulty code.
I think it wasn't, yeah.
Yeah, like it has to be enclosed, three walls, so that would rule out your carport.
I just feel like we, I just feel like we're defeating our purpose if, oh, all of a sudden a carport isn't a, isn't an accessory building, what is it?
Not allowed.
It's illegal.
But can we enforce that? We haven't been so long.
We haven't been, and it needs to be, and if there's more people, we'll do that.
I mean, if it's new and we get a call tomorrow, we can go and address that. But for the one that sat there for however many years, I think we're past the point of.
No, we're definitely past that, we're definitely past that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So.
But are we gonna leave this under some company examples of an accessory structure include?
No, I've, I've got it struck down.
And I mean, then the other thing too is we can't, can someone build a, a wooden carport in their backyard off of the alley? Well, why couldn't they? But it should be permitted.
Seen a lot of creative things in the alleys, off of the alleys.
People wanna cover their cars.
Oh, and, and I don't have, and I have no.
Especially they don't have a garage.
And I have no problem with them covering them, but it needs to be, um, you know, there's, there's, um, there's a lot of carports in Guthrie that, I live across the street from a carport. It's flat roof, you don't see it, it's wood. I mean, you, you literally, it's, and it's in front of a house, it's flat roof, it doesn't have that, you know, wrapping metal.
That thing that goes like that.
You know, carports, I think people should be able to have a carport.
Well, either.
But it just shouldn't be able to be one of those slyway, uh, metal ones unless it's not in front of the.
So you would wanna allow one over a front driveway where it probably maybe was enclosed?
I mean, I'm, I'm only talking about, you know, these flat roofs and wood ones.
Could someone build a carport that would meet building design standards for wind?
No, I mean, no.
Not to go through a tornado or anything, I'm sure that you could.
It would be hard to.
What we gotta do is stop them from happening.
I agree.
Yeah.
Can we address that since we're gonna, since you're lining it out? Can it be addressed that, that carports are not allowed? Uh, I mean, such that, such that at least that we can, we have, we have enforcement through, through code enforcement.
I just don't think carports are a bad thing, I think we've metal carports.
Prefab, prefab carports.
Yeah.
Well, if you, if you designate it so that it doesn't include one of those prefab things and you write your criteria for it in such a way that it will be this way, um, as opposed to one of those, then you're okay, either you go full tilt or not at all.
Right.
And I think if you're gonna do that, you're almost gonna have to say that carport would have to be engineered theoretically so that it's angry and such that it doesn't blow it away.
I just don't wanna find myself.
Yeah, exactly, it would have, it would have to be designed with, with winds issues.
I guess basically what I'm saying is I don't wanna find myself in a planning commission meeting again where I'm arguing, and this is way before you guys, but I'm arguing with someone in, in planning and they're telling me that a carport is not an accessory structure. And I'm going, well, what is a structure? You know, I mean, that's, that's, it, I don't care what anybody says, it's an accessory structure.
Right.
You know, it is, but I've, and it was allowed, you know, on Broad Street, two places.
Is that something that you could perhaps kick around a little bit more with, with, with your staff folks and see if, if there's some way it can be allowed to be left in here, but definitely specifically noted as a.
Well, if it's an accessory building, it can't be in front of the house.
Well, engineered, an engineered carport.
Right.
And that's where they always have them.
Yeah.
Is in front of the.
It can't be in front of the house.
Well, it's usually, it's where the driveway is, so if the driveway.
That's, that's.
Depends on the driveway.
Usually is.
Unless they have a quarter lot.
Can't be in front of the house, and then if you want a carport.
Which is another front.
In the front.
Which is still another front, never mind.
It's a, it's a different.
Well, there's a bunch of those flat roof carports.
There, and it's gonna look bad.
Just because they're already there doesn't mean anymore should be built.
Yes, I just, I guess that's why I'm having the conversation, I just.
And, and we need to.
You know, and I know several people that over the years, and I mean, I can't even begin to tell you how many people live in a house and someone put one of those right in the front yard. And now, instead of being able to see up the street, in fact, I bought a rent house several years ago on the west side. And the very first thing I did was tear down that metal building that was in, a carport that was in front of the existing garage. So the garage wasn't enough, they needed a carport too. And when I tore it down, I sold it to someone who lives in the country. The guy that lived next door walked in and said, thank you, you know? Um, yeah, there's several people that are living right next door to them, but.
You got any ideas how it could be addressed?
We can look into that, a lot of the, the permitting or whatever, I mean, and part, part of that is like typically people are putting up their own carports, so we can't really like ensure that they did or didn't do it correctly. But it's not really secured depending on how they put it up.
Generally not.
Yeah, and so we, we really have nothing to, I guess, permit or inspect, it's more like checking if it's the right type. Let me dig into the carport thing.
Yeah, because.
I'll pull some of the building code.
I mean, there's so many places in town where it's messed up the street.
I agree, they could be.
I mean, I mean, really badly.
Well, and there's one, there's one that has like the barn arched roof and then it has these sidewalls that come halfway down. So I guess the thought is if you had hail, it wouldn't come in on the side of your car, but it's very distracting.
Well, it's, you can't even look up the street anymore.
Yeah.
And see, properly designed, you would have to get into some pretty heavy footings and hold downs, big hold downs and, and, and probably check with Myers Engineering, but I don't even, it would be interesting to know if there are even one that they would put their stamp on that would be buildable that, that we could inspect.
Well, and at that price point, I don't think those are the people that are, um, when they're looking at that as a viable solution, they're not going to pay for some engineer stamp.
No.
No, they want something for.
If they have a, they have a little spare garage.
Yeah, they would go to the garage, so.
Can't blame them for that, for wanting to protect a nice car or something, it's different. But maybe you could view that for us.
We'll investigate the carport scenario further.
Uh, the only other thing, and I don't know where we have it here, but, and, and I know that you've wrestled with this, we've wrestled with this for years, is again, something in our ordinances that have gotten maybe, I hate to put it as more teeth, but whatever, in having to do with violations and, and what happens if somebody violates our, our, you know, our ordinances and, 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 and.
Are you talking about?
In other words, what can we do? Again, how many times have you, have you come in, well, I wanna build a metal building, I said, there's one right down the street, there's one next door.
Next, next.
Many times they were not permitted, they were bootlegged in, we have no control, let's dump. Water and the brick, but we start new here and if somebody goes out and just blatantly builds a, a structure asking for forgiveness later, I think we have to reach a point someplace where we say, well, here's our forgiveness. What's it gonna be, is it a fine, or are we gonna make somebody take something totally down? Hopefully, somebody reported it before it got fully built and maybe our inspectors can go out and say, oh, put a, put a stop on it. But I just, one of the reasons, we've lost planning commissioners.
That's over by the.
He passed away, Ed French said, I, I'm tired of being on the planning commission frankly and, and, and helping put in ordinances and protect the city and protect all the things we want and then they're not enforced. And it can become a little bit disillusional and I don't know what you can do if you can address that, but that would be helpful.
Oh, yeah.
That, that exists.
It's a lovely home.
Yeah.
What's that looking like?
I'll even check.
I'm sorry, that's to be adjourned.
Oh, yeah, that's what I'm talking about, the prefab, seems terrible.
Does any of that make any, I don't know.
That's like a farm thing.
Yeah, there was something in ours. Uh, Mr. Chapel, you were, there was something in our ordinances about violations. And what was their deal on, wasn't there a fine or something, but we wondered if they were ever enforced?
Oh, I know, it's the end of the ordinance. At the end of the ordinance, says anyone who breaks this order is threatened or, or, you know, but will be convicted and prosecuted.
And subject to fine, I believe.
Yes, it's every day that they are in violation.
But what has happened is, is that we've not either had the manpower, staff or whatever to do it and it, it, it becomes a little counterproductive if we don't address that.
But my point is, the next time one of these goes up, it's got to come down.
Yeah. Where else it's just gonna be, there's ten on my block, I just want what ten neighbors have.
Yeah.
And you're talking, you're not even talking to Guthrie, you're, from your, where you live and.
Oh, no, just hypothetically, if, if we keep turning a blind eye and they, you know.
Well, and, you know, the deal is, we can do all this on the metal buildings, but this defeats everything that we've done here tonight. If, if in these, if in these overlay districts that, that we're protecting for metal buildings, I can get a metal carport in our front yard and what the heck were we wasting our time for?
And fill it with stuff.
Say you.
And fill it.
The sides aren't, put your wall over there.
And fill it with stuff, because that's what always happens.
You know what, uh, just to kind of you folks to stay, why don't we just also throw a little deal in here? You, you've sat and listened to all of us, your wife certainly participated in our workshop. Is there anything else you'd like to add for, for, for any of us to?
I think, just hope you guys consider, you know, letting us build a building and and we'll make sure it's a good looking place. I mean, we're building a nice little house and we're gonna keep it nice and.
I told your wife I've lived, your house, how beautiful.
Yeah, thank you.
But we're glad it was being a part.
We designed that ourselves and.
Yeah, that's right.
And it's, it's our little dream, you know?
We heard the forgiveness thing and we're like, uh.
It doesn't really work for us.
Mr. and Mrs. Atkinson.
You took the high road.
Yes, that is correct.
And your name again, Sylvia?
Is Art.
Art?
Yes.
Atkinson, Sylvia and Art Atkinson.
Yeah, we have the city inspector at our house weekly, you know, so we can't build something and then ask for forgiveness because it's not gonna, we don't wanna slow down our house.
Yeah, like forgiveness.
Yeah, but forgiveness isn't gonna work.
It's not the way to go.
No, it's not.
But this, this is all good, that, you know, this is happening and.
Oh, we appreciate your coming in and, and, and listening and.
We was hoping more would show up today.
I was expecting more.
Last time they were, you know, there were six of us.
They did all their venting at the last meeting.
Yeah, I expected more public.
I did too, I thought there'd be a lot.
I expected more.
Never know.
I thought there would be something more about the fact that some of the, some of, some of the structures are needed to put the antique cars in. I mean, and some of your extra, that's not, that's, that's also legitimate concerns.
Yes.
Do we have anything else that you need to add for us, Mr. Plane?
I don't have anything else unless you guys have something else. Um, I think that that gives, that gives me things to take back so that we can have a pretty, hopefully a pretty finished ordinance that we can look at for next month and maybe make some tweaks here and there, but hopefully approve or conditionally approve and based on some minor things. I mean, if you think of something when you go to bed tonight and dream, send me an email.
I don't think, I don't think I can think of anything.
Joe's gonna be dreaming it.
Can we, uh.
Carport.
Can we ask the favor of?
When someone tells me that they're not accessory buildings, I'm sort of like, don't go there, Peter.
In, in Wikipedia, I looked it up while y'all were talking, and Wikip, Wikipedia says an accessory building to shelter your car.
I think with insurance, it's also.
No.
Uh, I pulled it up.
Yeah.
With insurance, we have.
Excuse me.
Well, our, our, it's gonna be a shopping, yeah, that one.
An accessory building to shelter your car.
Yes.
May we, uh, may we ask, uh, may we ask the favor of, uh, before our meeting, and I know you guys got a lot on your plate, can we, can we see the draft, have it, gosh, it'd be nice to have it a week before if we can, so we can, we can all look at it and really, and, and I know we can't talk, we're one or two of us, but whether or not we even, maybe even discuss with you rather than have to wait until that night, it's just, it's pretty, pretty difficult to wait until the evening of our meeting, try to read it all and say, yay, yay, or whatever.
Oh, well, that, and others just run, it's usually forty-eight hours before I, we do have, I will tell you, we have a lot going on. I will make a note and I will make every effort, but.
Do the best you can, it's all we can.
Yeah, and, and at the end of the day, we're not, we want to, we want everyone to be comfortable with what we adopt and we're not really, it's not a race, we don't want it to be a marathon either, but.
No, it's kinda, we gotta get it right.
We, we wanna get it right, but we also wanna get it done. But I'll make a note and we will try with everything to get it a week in, or so everyone has adequate time to.
We certainly know how busy you are and stuff like that. Uh, so, the final thing here would be staff comments, you pretty well took care of that, huh?
I have no further comments.
Do we have any further commission comments?
Sure.
Everybody given up? Not even Joe, you have nothing else to say?